We'll call the June 4th Board of Commission meeting to order. Join me on the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you and welcome. First thing on our agenda is public comments. If anybody from the public has some comments they'd like to share with the board that's not on the agenda today, now's the time to come forward. If you have something that's on the agenda, when we get to that portion of the agenda, we'll probably give you a time to come up with that point. So please, come up, identify yourself, and share.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna start off by apologizing because I am not a group speaker and I've been doing this probably two or three times a week now and I still get extremely nervous. So I'm telling myself what I tell my athletes. The reason my athletes get nervous before they do anything out of their comfort zone is because what they're doing matters, and this matters to me. And I'm gonna pretend I'm talking to this beautiful sheriff that talked to me in the hallway while she caught me in a moment of nervousness. And I'm gonna pretend I'm just talking to her because she sees the community I'm trying to reach right now and I'm gonna hope in my heart that someday she's in a situation where she's gonna remember what I said and I'm gonna be able to help her. Because that's where I win today. And if all of you could just take a moment to hear what my vision is for my county and my community, I would like to share with you what I'm trying to create here in Chaska. So I'll start with, I'm Sin Robertson. I live in Chaska. I work in Chaska. I'm an auxiliary member at the VFW. My heart is 100% in my town. I'm gonna do my best to give you an elevator pitch and my mission statement. And this is 100%. Now, if we could go do like 100 rupies for time or go run a mile with a 25-pound rucksack, I'm ready to go.
I wish I could do that.
But this makes me so nervous and I wanna show you guys the utmost respect and I apologize if it's coming off bad. But in 2012, the Department of Veteran Affairs Mental Health Services Study Prevention Suicide Prevention Program did a study that we lose. Twenty-two soldiers have made a suicide. And this hurts my heart. There has not been a study by the department since 2021. So if I see where our suicide rate has gone, if I see where our OD rate has gone, and I could tell you the intimate stories that the veterans share with me when I shake their hand and thank them for the service, this 22 is a drop in the bucket. My community is also hurting. There aren't numbers of how many I'm losing to suicide, but if I told you the statistics of the class I teach and I make them talk about what they're going through, our numbers are through the roof. Suicides and ODs are out of control. Something has to be done. And I'm here to fight for my community, to fight for the people that I'm in front of every day. And with that, I plan to be the founder, the creator, and in the trenches for revitalizing veterans' dreams. This all happened on accident last year due to a suicide that affected my house. I went to the park with the hope that I could help one person do a very tough workout and create a community. I had 14 people show up and one Marine. I decided to blow on that fire. I did another workout in the park in September. Because I'm not as organized as people believe I am, my numbers were a little off with the city of Chaska, with the Chaska Community Center, so it's center, so we don't have real numbers of how well I did. But I can tell you, I did another workout this May, last week, in the park, and I had 53 people show up. I tripled my numbers in one year. As I stand here telling you I have no clue what I'm doing, I'm doing my heart and passion. I do better when my community does better. You guys will all do better the more I'm out there fighting for this town, in this county. So, through Revitalizing Veterans Dreams, and I've gotten sidetracked, I do that, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
I'll do my mission statement. My mission statement is, I am revitalizing veterans' dreams. I increase, I aim to increase veterans' physical, mental, and spiritual vitality. We do this through fitness opportunities and building a community that provides a safe place, a place to feel safe, supported, and energized. The combination allows veterans to grow stronger and dream of a future beyond the camouflage. My challenge is, the military provides a brother and sisterhood that is unmatched anywhere else. It is difficult to replicate after they serve their nations. Veterans may lose a sense of drive, community, and connection. I feel community can also feel these issues, which leads to isolation. And when my athletes and my veterans feel isolated, it truly breaks my heart because I am so honored for what both my athletes and my veterans have done for me. Our challenge is to help assist veterans in finding their ways towards a renewed sense of self and home. We'll be building a community that can come together. With everybody in Chaska benefits from that. The things that I do through Revitalizing Veterans Dreams, I do three workouts in the park. I do May, September, and November. So, catch what that is, Saturday before Memorial Day, Saturday before 9/11, Saturday before Veterans Day. We do what is called a Hero WOD. WOD stands for Workout of the Day. A Hero WOD is a workout that is dedicated to a soldier that has lost his life in combat or suicide. A Hero WOD gives you a purpose to be working out. You're not just running around the block to get healthy. You're not just doing 100 push-ups to get stronger, or get off your knees, or to gain stamina. You're working out for purpose and honor of somebody. I feel athletes push harder when they do that. I feel we get bonded when we do hard things. I feel the veterans see it and it reminds them of their brother and sisterhood. And they come alive when they are in the parks with us. I offer training to help our young men and women who are struggling to go to boot camp. They come with, they come to my garage Thursdays afternoons before I go to the community center. That's all volunteer time. Any of the recruiters that I work with, their Depers, Pooleys, or future soldiers get to come train with me once a week to get ready for boot camp. That benefits me. I'm putting a healthy soldier into boot camp. He's gonna work his hiney off to make his coach proud. Next Tuesday, I'm doing a special workout with two of my young men that are going to boot camp. After we do this workout with my class, which my class loves my heroes, we're coming to Coach's house and having a meal because it's more than just working out. It's bonding us through a meal of hope. What else do I do? Oh, I had a huge meeting with the first lieutenant of all the Minnesota Army recruiters. She doesn't like me being in front of her future soldiers three times a year. She wants me in front of her future soldiers once a month. So I am now training our future soldiers once a month, inviting the families so that when that soldier goes off to boot camp and then most likely is getting deployed, because if you watch the news, our nation is in unrest right now. I'm bonding with the families. The families now have a community in Chaska to find help and support. And that benefits all of our county, and this is for all of the state of Minnesota. I have accidentally grown out of Veterans Park, not realizing I'm now in all of the state of Minnesota. So, what else do I do? Plans are in place. And the benefit of that is our future soldiers see that they have Chaska and Carver County's support behind them. People work harder when they think people are counting on them. And my recruiters, I have two recruiters getting ready to retire next year. They repeatedly tell me how thrilled they are to have somewhere to land that is in Revitalizing Veterans Dreams, once they retire, to help make this better, to help it grow. Things I do to help my veterans, make happy birthday boxes because everybody should be remembered on their birthday. Nobody should not have a present on their birthday, so I make happy birthday, thank you for your service boxes. I work with a company called Operation Gratitude on California. They mail me thank you bags. When I notice a veteran in public, usually my trick is their hat. I will thank them for their service and I will hand them the bag and I tell them they can find me at the VFW and we go have a conversation. Why they trust me is because it's my gift. They do trust me with very personal, intimate details, and I'm honored to take that space and give them that moment to heal. I will be doing a free workout at Chaska City River Days on Sunday, the 28th, at 8:00 a.m. That's another way for people to get to know me, get to know my energy, get to know my heart, realize that yes, working out is hard, but you will survive and be okay. And if you do it for free, then there's no reason you can't come. Happy birthday. I make meals. It started out as just veterans, but I have a big heart. And if I'm at the community center walking out my trap because it's too windy or cold to be outside and I overhear somebody talking about a heartache they're going through, I make a meal. I make a meal for anybody going through a hard time because I believe in my heart, a meal offers hope. September is my biggest event of my three. That's where my silent auction is. My silent auction last year, I set a veteran snowmobiling. I covered his snowmobile, his lodging, his food, his travel. He couldn't afford to go with his friends. I believe if you have a day on your calendar, you go on vacation, you get excited, you count down. You start pre-packing, you go to Target, you go shopping. If I can put something on the calendar for a veteran to look forward to, I've offered hope. So last year I made 630 at the silent auction. This year I plan on making 1,000. I am brave enough to go ask another business to double it. Last year I made flags and honor double it and Whitey took out $20 and said, "Now you have to sit on my board. I've never met anybody like you." So I've been sitting on Whitey's board since October when I made him double my donation. You went through my numbers. So you're wondering, how do I work for the city of Chaska? I do group fitness at the Chaska Community Center, but I am a believer of making spaces for people that don't have a space. I have created a class for our city. There's only two in the world. There's ours and there's one in Brazil. I do a class called LBA. It stands for Large Body Athletes. It's not shaming, it's not derogatory, it's not up to coach to decide what a large body athlete is. But if I'm gonna be completely frank, it's a workout class for the morbidly obese. And it has taken off. These people have made me so proud to be their coach and in their space. So I have the morbidly obese and I have the veterans. They both have loneliness. They both have isolation. They both will tell you, "There's no space for me. Nobody cares." I'm here to take that myth away. My vision in time is to blend the two together because the problems are the same. Did my LBAs have to be athletes in May? Yep. Made all of them. Sign up and do the May workout. It's gonna take time to get the veterans, but I have the VFW support. The city of Chaska gives me the park for free. VFW gives me the banquet hall for free. The VFW pays all military entrance fees. And the VFW has me doing all the things. I'll be at a flag ceremony on Thursday. I marched in the parade with them last week. Whatever they need me to do, I will be the face. We are not losing our VFW. Google VFW. Go to the one in Waconia. It'll send you to an abandoned building. I'm not losing my VFW. It's where I belong. It's what our county needs. It's what our city needs. And it's where the veterans find me. And it's where they feel safe to talk to me. So, I feel like I've babbled a lot and I'm sorry, but I would love to have questions.
We usually don't allow questions on public comments, but no. But I'll take a special, does anybody have a question or a comment? This is, you've done an extraordinary good job explaining what your mission is right now. Thank you for doing that.
I have my logo with me. I have why everything is in the logo, like the arrow of the compass. That is the arrow a military person has issued in their compass. The barbell represents me. The dream is split up because it's sometimes really hard to achieve your dream and you have to work really hard to get over it. The heartbeat is because we're all in this together. And I don't mean to sound harsh or nasty, but I speak very differently with my athletes and with my veterans. Nobody's coming. It's up to us to band together because nobody's coming to save us. We're losing our town faster than I can blink. It's unacceptable. So I'm gonna do something. This is my town. I live here. I wanna be proud of my town and I'm gonna stand up and do something. And your help is gonna help me, just makes it not so hard. It's hard when you're the only person steamboating ahead.
You remind me of a coach, and that's what I like. I like that type of passion and drive. Any questions, comments? Anybody have anything you wanna share?
When's the next shot for us obese to hang out?
Today is the first day of the next four-week session. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays, Chaska Community Center, 5:00 to 5:45.
Good question. Have you, are you aware of Beyond the Yellow Ribbon group?
I am aware, but the trouble is, is when you tell me to call them, if I call them, I end up in a pile and I don't get any return calls back. If you do a group email with me, I'll get a response. I've tried. I've tried to get ahold of MACD. I've tried to get Beyond the Yellow Ribbon and I've tried to find...
Give me your contact information and you will get a response. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments? Thank you for your time. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Anybody else have something they wanna share with the board this morning? Seeing none, we'll move on to our agenda review and adoption. This morning, you should have in front of you a proposed amendment, agenda amendment. We're moving 5.14 to 6.2.
Mr. Chair, move adoption with those modifications.
Motion by Commissioner Udoman, second by Commissioner Workman, to approve the agenda with the proposed amendment. Yeah, proposed agenda amendment. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, approval of the minutes in the May 21st meeting.
Move to approve as presented, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion on that motion? Again, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Community announcements. I'll start, Commissioner Workman. Anything to share this morning?
Mr. Chairman, nope, I'm good.
Good. Commissioner Udoman.
Mr. Chair, I just want to recognize Sin for you being in the audience. Some people may find it annoyingly energetic. I call it passionate purpose and appreciate you and people like you in our community and all that you're trying to do. You're gonna hit your head against the wall many, many times, but I know you well enough to know that you're gonna continue to push through that. Had a chance to participate in your MRF activities a year ago and then was down at the race. I think you're gonna hit over 100 next year, so keep going. Huge supporter of what you're trying to do. Memorial Day, I know a number of us had a chance to participate in various Memorial Day festivities across the county. I think it was the fourth or fifth year in a row. Was able to visit seven cemeteries, a beautiful program at Chaska Veterans Park. It was wonderful. Chaska PD has presence, Sheriff's Office has presence, American Legion VFW. It's just a sobering conversation. The gentleman that spoke talked about his time being on a boat on the way to Vietnam and the war had been fought by the time the six weeks had passed for him to get off the boat. And so he was on the boat heading that way. You just think about how his life was changed through that process. Also, constituent friend and supporter of local veterans, Mike Peterson, spoke at the Veterans Wall this year. It's super rare for somebody from our community to have a chance to be there. You can find it online. He was one of the speakers. The keynote speaker was the chairman and former CEO of FedEx, the founder of FedEx, was a veteran and he started FedEx on the foundation of veteran labor by and large. And so, a moving presentation by Mike and served us well. He had his whole family to be out there too, which is pretty cool and special. 100 Mile May. Chaska Community Center launched this a number of years ago for urging people to walk and run 100 miles through the course of May. I'm proud to be part of that, second year. I know that there's probably 50 or 60 people that participated in that. Sometimes it's hard because that's, you're averaging three and a half miles a day or so. AMC District meetings for District 10 were held in Shakopee last week. I know there was a couple of commissioners there. Afterwards, I had a chance to jump on the trolley with a number of our peers and go see their amphitheater. They're spending $80 to $100 million on an amphitheater. They found out that there was a window that the Minneapolis metro area didn't have a sizable outdoor amphitheater and there's a huge opportunity. They're anticipating 600,000 visitors in their first year, 50 to 70 events, and an estimated economic impact of over $75 million. And so, it's just a stone's throw away. It's inspiring to see them press on those things and see them come, literally come out of the ground and come to life. It'd be cool when that gets opened. One of the observations that was interesting on our tour was the technology for lights and bending sound. Because if you think about, there's probably, I don't know, 200 or more expensive horses at that facility. If you're having band events, you have to think about are you scaring or frightening those horses? And they think that they can control those decibels, so it's gonna have no impact, which is mind-boggling if you think about sound technology in the last 10 years. Officer Julie Jankie retired. It was cool to see over the course of a couple hours the number of people that came, young and old, and rich and poor, and people that have been part of our community for a short time and a long time. She's made a big impact. The comments I shared with Julie was, she's one of the people that does it best to bridge the gap with people that inherently trust law enforcement and those that inherently don't. And she's done a fantastic job. We're gonna miss her. She's still gonna be active in the community. The board had a strategy session last week out at Paradise Commons. It was a nice time to be together. Right now, we're facing an unfavorable trend and what's on the table is a proposed 7.4% to 12.4% levy increase. And so, there was a number of topics discussed in there that we'll continue to work on until we pass that final budget. I think those numbers are too high and I continue to suggest ways we can whittle those things down. Had a chance to meet with Three Rivers Park District and visit the camper cabins in Scott County. We've been talking about those. We're probably six to nine months behind some of their efforts. But really cool developments happening with those folks and in partnership. Chaska Youth Softball spent a good amount of time on the soccer field and softball fields this weekend. And it hit my ears, is interesting and worth promoting, that our youth softball league in Chaska is the fourth largest in the state. The fourth largest in the state. And as our aging population ages faster, as it becomes increasingly unaffordable for younger families to live here, I think this is a bright spot of being intentional about trying to attract younger people. We'll also hear from the CDA later today. And so, it was just cool. The rain came in, the amount of people that got together on the softball fields to clean those puppies off and to get the games done, and just to see those kids and the parents and the growth that's happening. And then finally, I had a chance to be with some leadership at Hazeltine. For those that didn't know, they proposed and approved with a strong vote, a new 10-hole, six-villa, $36 million complex that should be ready leading up to Ryder Cup. So those are things that are happening in our community that impact us in more ways than one, whether it be a tax base or whether it's interest in our community. So, those are my comments. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Lynch, anything to...
Yeah, if I could, it just seems like in March we had the Township Association meetings. I was out telling, after no snow in the winter, I told everyone, "We're not gonna have any flooding." Here it is, June 4th, and we're having a lot of flooding, so I'm sure you guys will have more updates on that. Well, no, with a heavy heart, I wanna say the passing of Stan Halt. Stan Halt, a member from Maire, he was instrumental in the Carver County Veterans Memorial. He was here many times. He was a firearm safety instructor for 60 years. He was actually was one of my teachers for firearm safety. He was a member of the Fire Department. If in Travel Easy in Waconia, that was his business. He was a veteran and just a wonderful fellow. And his, matter of fact, he's such a wonderful fellow, the visitation, everything's at the Maire Lutheran High School. Because any church he would fill up, he knew everyone, you know, so. Visitations at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday morning at Maire Lutheran, the funerals till 11:30, so.
Those people are hard to find. You don't replace them.
Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just wanna give a shout-out for breakfast on the farm. Is this Saturday at the Scott and Irikhazy Farm located in Maire, just off of Highway 7. That event goes from 7:00 to 1:00 o'clock. I'm gonna be there helping serve and clean up after breakfast from 7:00 to 10:00. So if you're in that area and wanna see a working dairy farm, this is a great opportunity. Also, with all the flooding, Commissioner Degler and I are on the mosquito board and there is a pretty extensive effort taking place now with mosquito control. There's a lot of work being done around the city of Carver with the river overflowing and the helicopters were out in the NYA area yesterday flying around and dropping more pellets. So hopefully, there's some relief to come. Congratulations to Chaska Police Officer Julie Jenke on her retirement. I was at that event, just a great event. And just a personal note, my wife and I were part of the group that helped to get Julie and her husband, Bob Lano, together. And now they live in North Young America, so it's great to see Julie develop and also to retire. Congratulations to her. We were, Commissioner Degler and I were at the AMC District 10 meeting and they talked about the conference coming up slated for December, the 9th through the 11th at Bloomington. And they also talked about more training coming. There's gonna be... at Bloomington, and they also talked about more training coming, there's gonna be more county board chair training, that's gonna take place in January of twenty-five, and their county one oh one training, part two, is gonna take place next year, and then also the home run leadership program, uh, they'll be kicking off. I also had the opportunity to go to New Germany, its town baseball season is in full strin- swing, and New Germany, their first night ever with baseball at night, uh, they have lights put up, and that event was on the twenty-eighth, very well attended, and if you get an opportunity to go see some local town ball, it's just a great opportunity to, to see your community and go buy a burger and beverage and just enjoy town ball. And then, uh, the Central Raiders ended their season yesterday, they had a game in Cologne, uh, baseball, they had lost to Rockford, so their season is over. That's all I have.
They extended that season quite a ways.
And Mr. Chair, if I could, um, parking for breakfast at the farm is at the Watertown Mayor High School, and then they have shuttle buses going back and forth, so.
I tell you, hate to park on Mr. Hazy's field, especially when it's as soggy as it is right now. Just mention a few things, uh, congratulations to the city of Chan-Hassen, uh, they had their groundbreaking for the new Chan-Hassen Civic Center, uh, gonna consist of the city hall and other amenities around there, that was on May thirtieth. We mentioned Memorial Day, uh, at every cemetery that we went to, had the chance to, uh, teach the kids and the grandkids what the significance of Memorial Day is, and at each cemetery you have the chaplains, uh, giving a spiritual message, and I told the chaplains, hey, if we see you starting to float up into heaven, it's not because God is taking you, it's because the mosquitoes are so bad. I mean, they were really vicious on Memorial Day, and one thing we found out that the reason that Chaska, Carver, or other cities close to the river have such a mosquito problem, it's been a number of years since we had this high water, so, and these eggs that the mosquitoes lay can lay into soil for two to three years, and now with the environment the way it is, and the fact that the mosquito, Metropolitan Mosquito Control District can't spray on fish and wildlife and DNR property, so that breeding ground is off limits to Metropolitan Mosquito Control, so we really, not much we can do, but they do, um, spray city parks and that kinda stuff, uh, on a call-in basis. So, like I say, you can get some temporary relief, but until this weather changes, it's going to be a challenge. We mentioned softball and spring sports for a lot of people, and we know the whole activities are for our youth, uh, but it's surprising how many parents get involved, but the most important person on that softball field is the umpire, and the only reason I mention that is, uh, my daughter, who went through the softball, um, regiment and actually played in, in college too, but anyway, she's now umpiring, she's down in the state of Texas, Division Three World Series Championship, the first, uh, first round is today, the championship game will be tomorrow, she'll be down there a whole week, so when you're watching the games, some of us are watching the umpires, so. Any other community announcements?
Did she bring her glasses?
She did inform me that there were a couple real close plays that she, and then it's reviewed, and this time, they're in Texas, but the review happens in Pennsylvania, so they have to wait for the review, and she's been right every time, so I was very impressed with that, but split-second decisions umpires do have to make. Other community announcements, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave, you have an announcement?
Yeah.
Introduce, introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity, I wanna introduce Krista Willard, our new county administration executive assistant. Of course, Diane Wabi has retired, uh, or longtime executive assistant, I learned firsthand how tough her job was in this transition, and boy, am I thankful to have Krista here to save the day, uh, she told me it's gonna take her at least a week to figure everything out, but it is, it, I learned, I really learned how, how tough a job, and how important it is, as you all know, she takes care of all of us.
Yes.
So, I'll have her introduce herself, and again, welcome her.
Welcome Krista, say a few words.
I'm Krista, um, I grew up in the area, I've worked here at Carver County since two thousand eighteen, um, so I'm excited to start up here with you guys.
Well, if there's anything that you need, tell us, because you make us look good, so thank you very much.
And that's a tough job.
Which is, which is very. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just wanted to recognize our new chief communications officer is in the room too, this is a huge step in the right direction, something we haven't had for a while, not just reactive for the needs that we have, but proactive, this is a big step for our county, so I wanted to recognize you're in the room too, thanks for being here.
Nick, did you wanna say any few things about our communication officer? Come on up, come on up, Nick. Ari.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I was in front of you earlier this year to, uh, create this new position at Carver County and the department within public services, so now I'm pleased to, uh, welcome Ari into that role, uh, like Commissioner Udoman said, it's a big step forward for our county and really being more, uh, proactive with our communications and creating that structure, uh, going forward, so I'll let, uh, Ari introduce herself quick and put her on the spot.
Welcome Ari.
Hi, I'm Ari Lixet, I'm the new chief communications officer, I come from the city of Chan-Hassen, so I know a lot about Carver County, and I'm really excited to work with you all, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Anything else that should be added before we continue on with our agenda? Good, uh, item number five, the consent agenda. This morning, we have quite a few things on the consent agenda, I'll just kinda highlight a few of them, we'll have an amendment for acquisition and relocation service for the two-twelve project, we have donations to the foster parent appreciation, funding applications for, uh, Highway five forty-one intersection, we have matching agreements, matching funding agreements for two-twelve projects, we have right-of-way plats for, uh, Highway eleven and fourteen, utility relocations for the two-twelve project, a special event on the Fourth of July fireworks, Carver County Fair received a donation, uh, out-of-state travel for our probation agents, tobacco license renewals, we have donations to the HH, HHS for professional staff, out-of-state travel again for Public Works Manager, we have requests for subscription, subscription-based faxing solutions, we have inmate management budget amendment, we have jail cell painting and restoration, a final plat for Watertown Wetlands, health and human service warrants, settlement agreement for right-of-way the ten and forty-one project, again, settlement right-of-way for the two-twelve project, again, right-of-way acquisitions for eighteen Arboretum Area Project, temporary home special needs, you, uh, IUP, we have an approval contract for Public Works, a utility relocation for two-twelve project, and a contract for Highway seventeen, Seventy-Eighth Street traffic replacement. Is there any questions or concerns on the consent, or is there a motion to approve the consent as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second, motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Fahy, any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair, just a quick discussion point, we talked about eighty-second Street and eighteen, we talked about two-twelve and eleven, what's not on there is ten, but the, the amount of work that Lennon and his team is have to, to have to do in the last five to ten years is incredible, and we're seeing some of that come above water, right? We're, we're seeing the planning, we're seeing the buying of the land, we're seeing the, uh, the shovel go in the ground, the next couple of years is gonna be historic, it's gonna be, um, challenging for the people that are driving, but once you get on the other side of that, we're gonna see huge things, the roundabout on Marsh Lake, um, two-twelve that, that many people thought wasn't gonna be possible, so today I wouldn't say it's historic, but some of those movements you see in the consent, and I like that you call them out and are transparent about the things that are on there when we vote on it.
We take things so granted that we in Carver County have some of the best roads in the state, uh, and that's not by accident, it's by careful planning. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the consent, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on our agenda, item six point one, Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District Board of Managers' Appointment, I'm gonna turn it over to Carver County, County Attorney, Mr. Mark Metz.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Yesterday afternoon, a legal issue arose on this agenda item, and our office needs some additional time to more thoroughly research that issue and provide a legal memo to this board, so you're informed, so my recommendation is that this agenda item be postponed until June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at that board meeting, what that would take would be a motion and a second and a vote to postpone this agenda item until, until June twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth, I'm looking over at Administrator Hemsey, that's the date we, you.
Yeah, that'll work, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay. Uh, you heard the recommendation from our county, uh, attorney to postpone this agenda item to June twenty-fifth, is there such a motion?
I, I would move that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Workman.
Second, and I just, I mentioned.
Second by Commissioner Udoman, now discussion, Commissioner Udoman.
Is, is part of that, I'd love to see the applications, I think sometimes we come into the meeting and we don't get to see the applica- there's multiple applications that were mentioned, and I haven't seen any of them, so as part of that is the prep, I'd like to see the applications of the candidates.
These applications, I think, were.
Yeah, I sent them, I can resend them.
Sounds good.
Please resend.
Great, thanks.
Uh, we have, uh, Commissioner Workman.
Well, and Mr. Chairman, I think, I think the board ought to investigate what exactly is the unspoken with this appointment. Mr. Cook is in the room, he's done an exemplary job, um, and, but he's something of a thorn in the side of, uh, the staff at the Riley Purgatory Creek Bluff Watershed. Probably uncovering open meeting law violations, perhaps some malfeasance, um, spending six billion dollars on a piece of bluff land instead of actually fixing creeks near my home, um, I think, I think the board ought to investigate what's wrong with Larry, he wants his job that he's doing really well at, and so, uh, I hope to help educate the board on that. He's done exactly what an appointed public official ought to be doing, and so, um, we can look at other applications, I think those are all fine people, I think there's some problems with the way Chan-Hassen did theirs, I was told only that they liked the answers the other applicants gave, one of them wasn't even there, so, um, and then I think it was approved at the work session, not, at, at least it wasn't on the agenda for the city council meeting later, and Chaska is in this district, will Chaska be invited to supply six names like Chan-Hassen was supposed to perhaps, but anyway, we'll get more from
Good discussion points.
But, uh, there's a lot going on here, and, um.
Good discussion points, and that's why we're giving county attorney staff, uh, hopefully adequate time to look into, uh, whatever we need to, before we make this decision. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of postponing the appointment for the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed Manager to June twenty-fifth, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We'll move on, item, uh, six point two, uh, that was what we moved from our consent agenda, uh, it's request for approval for subscription-based Cisco cloud calling solution with that'll call up, uh, IT manager Jim Running. Mr. Running, welcome.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning Commissioners. Um, I'm, I'm here, uh, representing IT to ask for support, um, for RBA ninety-eight forty-seven, which is a, uh, extension and modification of our, uh, existing phone system. The support for our, our phone system ends in July, and we've, in IT, we feel it's a, it's a good time to, to, we, we need to renew it, but we wanna upgrade it and move it to a cloud-based system within Cisco, yeah.
Yeah.
Everything's better in the cloud, right? Yeah, and this, this kind of meshes up with our, our goals in IT of trying to reduce our footprint of hardware in the data center and get things out into clouds when we can. So, first, I'll just go over some benefits of cloud, um, one of the big benefits is DR and survivability, it aligns with the, uh, COOP plan that has been going on for a long time, where, where we'll have a little more robust system where we'll have availability, we'll have the, the ability to bring up phones and remote systems if needed, when needed, um, and it kinda gets our hardware out, if we lose a data center, we, we don't have to worry about it, not to say that the cloud couldn't go, but it's probably a bigger chance in our data center. So, uh, it, it also provides us flexibility and ease of setup and moving phones around locations with the cloud, uh, we could set up, and especially with the space plan with buildings maybe getting destroyed, if we gotta put an office in a trailer or in a storefront or something, as long as we have internet, we can spin up the same phones, just put them, move them there, put them in, into, uh, wherever we need them to get people to work. Our phone numbers will all migrate into this new system, so we also eliminate, uh, our, our, um, need for a telco, cause the, the phone lines will just go right into the Cisco cloud and go up there, right now, we, we do have some, some, not big issues, but it's always, it's either, the, the phone, uh, issues are either with the telco or with the system, when we do have them, and then we gotta work between the two of them to get that, uh, resolved. So overall, this, this, um, reduces our hardware, it reduces support in the long term, we won't see immediate savings on that hardware, cause we already own the hardware, but it is aging, and we won't have to replace it, uh, anytime soon, once we get it out into the, to the cloud. It al- it also, um, aids in reducing the footprint of phones, handsets, we wi- we will, uh, try to embrace more soft phones going forward for users when we can, uh, so that we can get the handsets off the desks.
Can you explain to some of us, what's a soft phone?
Oh, yes.
Compared to a hard phone?
So, yeah, handset that you would have in your desk, traditional phone, you pick up an answer, there, there's, uh, soft phones, which is basically a piece of software that could go on a computer, or it could go on your cellphone, I could have my, I actually do have my office phone on my cellphone, so I can answer the county phone number here, wherever I'm at, so I have that, that ability to, to use that.
Thank you.
We, we do have that ability, ability now on-prem, it's a little bit more challenging to configure, cause everything has to come and funnel through into our data center to get to our system and then back out, so it's a little bit more of a challenge, when, when you move it into the cloud, i- it's a lot more forgiving, I guess.
Thank you for that explanation.
Certainly. Um, and, and, and a lot of that, that type of thing, the redu- reduction of, um, handsets, you know, this will have to be a, a collaboration between departments and possibly administration and, uh, you know, maybe, maybe unions, maybe, uh, ER, and, and, you know, what phones can we reduce and put into the soft phone, cause it's, it's not always, you know, the best, there's, there's public areas that may require a handset, or certain jobs may require a, an actual physical phone, but we, we don't have all that information yet, so it'll, it'll be a little bit of a time to, to figure that out and move that. So, the next, the next, uh, topic I have is why did we pick Cisco, there's hundreds of phone vendors out there, and we probably could go with any of them, and we've been on Cisco since about twenty-ten, you know, it's funny, I just remember coming in here, probably fifteen years ago, getting approval for that at that time, um, but yeah, so the agreement, uh, is, is going to expire in July, so we can stay on as we are, or move it into the cloud, or move on, um, but the Cisco, we feel has been a very robust system, uh, and we've, we've done many complex, uh, customizations to it with call handlers or phone trees, uh, where, like, say our license center, somebody will call the main number, hit one for this, two for that, you know, that, those types of things, they, so there's a lot of complex, uh, customizations in there, and these things will translate easily into the, to their cloud system. I also have a very high-skilled team of engineers who manage this now, so they'll be able to continue with their same skill sets, continue managing this without retraining, we've done a lot of demos with it, and actually they've simplified a lot of things that are gonna be a little bit easier, um, but we'll, I'll have that same group that'll be able to manage this. There's a lot of time savings in both set- There's a lot of time savings in both setup of phones and troubleshooting, because like I said, the, with the tel, the, the phone lines going right into Cisco, they're going to manage everything from that all the way to wherever our handset is. And we won't have to take on all that responsibility. We'll be more just the administrators of the system. Support, call quality. Cisco, one advantage they have over other providers is we have Cisco switches. A lot of times when you're dealing with networked phones, a lot of your issues can be within the switches. You can have jitter on the phones. One benefit Cisco has, they can troubleshoot right into the switch, right into the desktop, where another vendor, we might not get that, that luxury. They may have to say, well, you got to have Cisco look at your switches, and then we'll figure out the phone part. Another benefit is, not, not all of our phones would be compatible with the cloud, but at least 30 to 40% is. So there's a little bit of the savings there, we can repurpose phones. Anywhere else, any other vendor, we'd have to pretty much replace all handsets, or go to full soft phones. Cisco will also support, continue to support our on-prem at no cost for 18 months while we transition. That gives us time to, to migrate and figure out all the gotchas with the system, to get users either transitions to, to soft phones or set up new phones as needed. So that, that just gives us a lot of time to, to make that trans, transition smooth for everybody. So with that, I, I'll open it up for questions. If you have any questions for me on, on the system or why we're selecting to stay with Cisco.
We'll open up for everybody, but first question for me is, are you confident in the security of the cloud and through Cisco?
Yes, yes, very confident.
Good answer.
We, we have a really good relationship with Cisco, and their security is, is bar none, one of the best out there in the industry.
Okay.
Not to say there's not others that would be as equally secure, but they are, they meet a lot of the compliances that, that we would need in our system.
With that, Commissioner Urdeman, you wanted?
Yeah, I brought this one forward, because, thanks for the education. I think the heart of why I brought it forward is a full, a couple fold. We, we don't heavily use our handhelds anymore. And so part of this is you're educating us on the modernization of, of our county, and I think that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't get it all. I know it's really expensive, and I know there's changes, but, but it's the modernization. I also think that, that modernization, it's good to have those conversations now, as we, you know, in, in work session last week, we talked about, you know, the potential of space planning and, and the 600 building looking very different in the next five years. And so there are the precursors. But ultimately, we're going from physical hardware to cloud. We're going from onsite to offsite, which has security, and we're going from now or the past to the future. And I think that it's expensive, but one of the things that we don't talk about is the cost of downtime, and there's the potential of less downtime when we move into a digital environment where you can make little tweaks. It's not just a physical thing or cord or whatever, so it's helpful to hear what you're talking about. It's really the effort of the county to modernize in preparation for what a new building looks like in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Running? If not, is there a motion? We're looking for a motion to move forward with this subscription-based faxing solution. Do I get the right one?
Number 28.
Wrong page. A motion move forward with the subscription-based Cisco cloud calling solution through inside public sector, pending finalization of the contract review process.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Fahey, second by Commissioner Urdeman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, could I back up? I think you postponed the Riley Purgatory issue until June 25th.
Mm-hmm.
That's a work session. So there's a, we meant to, meant to postpone until the 18th. Can you clarify? You want to, you want to have them reconsider that vote?
Did you get it done by the?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, we can get that done. I thought we were having a board meeting on the 25th, but I think we should address that for the record as well, and make sure, and make sure everybody's in agreement with the June 18th date.
Okay. Previous motion was to bring the Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek appointment to the meeting on the 25th. Looking at our calendars, on the 25th, it's a work session, but we do have a board meeting scheduled for the 18th. So is there a motion that we could move the board me, that item from the 25th to the 18th?
Do we have to revote, or can we just agree to it?
amended.
Well, reconsider it and change it.
I would re-amend my motion.
Before, if I could interrupt, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Commissioner, unless you, are you gone?
On the 18th? No.
Okay, so we have a full board? Okay, thank you. Sorry. Sorry about that.
Okay, we have, Commissioner Workman is proposing to change his motion from the 25th to the 18th. Who seconded that motion?
I think I did, yeah, I'm fine with that.
You're fine with it? So the, both the person that made the motion and the person that seconded agreed to move the date from the 25th to the 18th. That was a motion, now a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Everybody understand what we're doing? So all in favor of the motion to move the appointment of the watershed from the 25th back to the 18th, our regular board, our board meeting on the 18th? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Sorry for the confusion on the dates. So thanks for bringing that up. Yep, to point that out.
Mr. Sheriff, I make the motion to recess as the county board and convene as a Carver County Board of Health.
Have a motion, I'll second that. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of recessing as the county board and reconvening as the Carver County Board of Health, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, we're now serving as the Board of Health, and with that, I'll call Dr. Richard Scott up here, Deputy Division Director. Mr. Scott.
That's your Degler Commissioner's Staff. Again, it's always an honor to be here to present on the state of health in Carver County. I think we can be proud of where we stand as it relates to health, but there's always more things to do, and so I will hopefully, having a high-level conversation on that today, lot to cover in a short period of time, want to allow for some questions and answers. So moving on, and I always have to remember. How about? Odeon, Odeon, oh, there you go. Okay, thank you. What's our vision for Carver County? It's healthy people, healthy communities, healthy Carver, for all of us for a lifetime. Just a quick story, it reminded me, I was, as I was preparing, when I first started doing some consulting work for Carver County more than a couple of decades ago, I was actually working at Scott County when I started helping out Carver County. But I remember we had a dream, when we formed the Carver County Health Partnership to become the healthiest county in Minnesota, and we all thought that was ridiculous and so far-fetched, and that we would never achieve it. And I says, well, you're never going to achieve it, don't write it down. And we actually wrote it down. That was many, many years ago. And as you all know, Carver County has been the healthiest county in Minnesota now, probably going on 12 years. Robert Wood Johnson Foundation changed the way that they did the ranking this year, so instead of having an actual ranking per county, they did categories. Carver County then, and they also expanded it to include the United States, not just Minnesota, and we were ranked in the healthiest category for both Minnesota and the United States. So we're real fortunate, there are many reasons for that. Obviously, there are many of us, though, who still are experiencing struggles, those who aren't as privileged as we are in order to access the services, to maximize their health, and that's one of the unique roles that Health and Human Services does, and specifically, public health. How can we work specifically with those individuals to give them the same opportunities, sense of belonging, and a sense of contributing to continue to make Carver County that healthiest, happiest, most educated place in Minnesota for all of us? So that's basically our mission. So how are we doing? Every five years, we are required by law, but we would do it anyway, to do a comprehensive community health assessment to better understand our community. Lots happened the last five years, and so we try to keep on top of that on an annual basis, but we pull out all the stops every five years to make sure that we're doing everything we can to really understand who we are, what makes us work, what are some of the challenges, what are our resources, and how can we both mobilize and orchestrate those resources to move forward to continue to make Carver County that healthiest county? So to better understand that we do that community, we use, we use a vetted program that was developed by the National Association of County and City Health Officials, or NACO. It's called MAP. It's mobilizing action through partnering and, or through planning and partnership. So we have a systematic process to go through in ours, not only to help us better understand our community, but then just based on that assessment, establish our priorities, our strategic plans, and then implement those moving forward. And it's not about us in Carver County only doing it, but how can we solicit the help of all of our residents and our partners in helping own that to be also a part of the solution, thereby creating a much more efficient, effective way to move forward. A wise mentor once told me, Richard, is that when you bring me in early, I'm your friend; when you bring me in late, I'm your judge. And so we bring people from the community at the very beginning of this process. Another mentor once told me too, and I think you offered me with this, is that people support what they help create. So the more that we can engage our community as part of this process, the more they support it, the more they helping us on, the more efficient we are then with our taxpayers' investment in our resources, and the better off we all are. So what have we learned? Well, as I mentioned, I'm just going to be going over more of a high level, but there's sort of three major themes that we learned over the course of this comprehensive assessment. And this is a similar thing that we're experiencing across the country. Now, while obviously the country is probably hurting more than we are, we're still experiencing some of the same concerns. And those three top concerns are health overall is declining. Mental health and affordability are some of our top concerns that were identified by our residents, and clearly, our county is changing. And so it's those major three things that we'll be addressing as we start developing our community health plan in order to help us, you know, continue to do our work.
I hate to interrupt when you say our health is declining. How do you measure that? By our, how long we live?
That's a very excellent question. That is one of the key indicators that we use, and I do have a couple of slides that will address that. So I just wanted to kind of say, tell you what to tell you, then tell you, and tell you what to tell you, right?
Yep, thank you.
And so this is just basically the three themes I'll be briefly covering that constitute our status of our health here in Carver County.
Thank you.
Excellent question. So as I mentioned, overall, health is declining. Now, while Carver County is still above average, we're obviously doing a lot better than other counties in Minnesota and other counties across the country, but we're experiencing very similar concerns about that. And one of the things that you mentioned is life expectancy. The average life expectancy of Americans peaked in 2014 at 78.9. In '22, it was 76.1, and primarily, not exclusively, due to COVID. But there were other issues that were already beginning to factor in our life expectancy even before the pandemic. Some causes of death besides COVID are increasing, instances such as major chronic diseases, kidney disease, liver disease, diabetes have increased, deaths by suicide and overdoses up, like Sin is referencing earlier. Traffic fatalities have increased, and all of these factors have combined to reduce the health and lifespan of all of us living in the United States. When you look at just the deaths, one of, this is a statistic that illustrates the increase in deaths. Now, this is some, partly due to the fact that we have increasing population, right? So obviously, as you have an increasing population, you would expect more of everything, but the percentage of actually those also increased slightly, not as much in Carver as across the state, but also increasing slightly. When you look at, this is where we're sort of fortunately, despite the increasing rates of death, Carver County has substantially fewer premature deaths than the state, Minnesota, or the United States on average. And you can see Carver County is the bottom line, Minnesota is the middle one, in the United States is the top. So obviously, Minnesota is one of the healthiest states in the United States, Carver County is one of the healthiest counties in Minnesota. When you look at causes of death, cancer is still the leading cause of death here in Carver County, followed by heart disease, dementia, and as you can see the list, COVID is not necessarily on that list. Last year, I think we had like, if I recall, we had, have the statistics here. We only had a handful of deaths, I'll have it here later, but we only had a, we had a total of 154 deaths of COVID across the whole pandemic. Last year alone, we had over 600 deaths in Carver County total. So you can see that COVID is responsible for a small part, but it is a sizable percentage of the increase of, in deaths associated in the county. This one, you break it out again by year, starting in 2019 through 2022. I don't have all the finalized data for '23 yet, but you can see that, that the deaths have sort of increased. There was a slight decrease in 2021 for cancer, but then obviously, it significantly increased again in '22. Heart disease has had that steady growth, stroke has had a fairly steady growth, and you can see COVID, obviously, we didn't have COVID in 2019, and so that first year was lower, the second year was the highest with the Delta and others, came back down, and now we, we haven't had any, experienced any deaths of COVID since the last reporting. I think we might only have had a total of four, I'd have to double-check that for sure so far this year. So obviously, deaths associated with COVID are few and far between, hospitalizations are fewer and far between, and I think we can be proud of what we have done here in Carver County in response to COVID. Because of our relationships that we'd established with our partners early on, prior to COVID, with our partnership with law enforcement and emergency management, with, you know, nursing homes and skilled facilities, with our clinics and hospital, we were able to galvanize our resources fairly early to make sure that we are outreach, both with PPE, with policies, and obviously, with our testing, and then when vaccines became available, we partnered both with Ridge View to have mass vaccinations, as well as targeted vaccines for those that were more vulnerable. And I think, as I may have shared with you before, Carver County is one of the first counties in Minnesota to establish parity among those who are considered BIPOC community, Black Indigenous of color, as well as white folks, and so we were able to get that parity of vaccine very early, and then we ended up having one of the lowest fatality rates of COVID associated, associated with COVID in the country. So that was real fortunate for us. Moving on, what is the second main concern that we identified, Sin also referred to this earlier, is mental health and affordability were identified as our top concerns. Mental health, the biggest challenge since the 2018 assessment is the increase in mental health concerns. Mental health has increased across, mental health issues have increased, the access to mental health services, they've become even more strained, and many more adults report experiencing mental health issues. And also, mental health is also a growing concern with our children and in schools. Approximately one in five of people surveyed through our health survey felt isolated, lonely, on edge, nervous, or other unwelcome emotions. According to the Ridge View Community Health Needs Assessment, we also looked at theirs as well. People in more rural areas of, of their service region experienced a greater number of poor mental health days, as well as more frequent mental distress. Now, when we ask, what are the biggest issues affecting health in Carver County, residents ranked the cost of healthcare and health insurance as two of the biggest factors of affecting health. I think you may know that Carver County has one of the lowest uninsured rates in Minnesota, but just because you have insurance doesn't mean that healthcare costs aren't a, a barrier to health, and that's usually because of deductible or the cost of the healthcare. They ranked the cost of housing number four, and then income, poverty, race, age, home location, gender, and many other factors also affect the health concerns. So in order to improve health, we will have to find ways to improve all those various factors that affect health. But cost and access to healthcare still remain very critical. In every survey and focus groups, residents identified the cost of healthcare as one of the biggest concerns, like I mentioned. Only 2% of people lack healthcare, like I mentioned, but residents paid large deductibles, uncovered expenses, expensive insurance costs. And access is also cited repeatedly, including the difficulty of getting appointments, getting to appointments, and finding culturally responsive providers. So that will be one of the areas that we will need to address moving forward. Carver County has had a partnership with River Valley Health Services for many years. That's, that's, that's a way of providing free healthcare for those who are under or uninsured. They have a business model that utilizes volunteer services of physicians, nurse practitioners, physicians assistants, and then a very highly effective paid staff that help utilize that volunteer service. And we hope to continue to work with organizations like that moving forward to help address this need, along with other strategies as well.
Since you mentioned River Valley, how can anybody who needs access to free medical care, how could they, again, contact River Valley?
Unfortunately, I don't have the contact information right with me, but that's one of the nice things about the internet. I would just Google River Valley Health Services, it would take them to the website. We do have a clinic here in Chaska. We just launched a new clinic also in Shakopee, that is staffed by another, a different set of physicians and, and physician's assistants, but under that same model.
And now they have joined and going, coming under the umbrella of the CAP organization?
That's what we're hoping for, yes. I, the CAP Agency Board is meeting next Tuesday. We've already, they have already approved the letter of intent to move forward. They still have to establish their definitive agreement, and then in which case, they'll, you know, continue with their due diligence, and then hopefully, the River Valley Health Services will be incorporated onto the CAP Agency. That will be a benefit, I think, to us all, because it will provide greater stability and sustainability for River Valley, but will still retain the business model of River Valley. So for the public, it will be basically the same thing.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Dr. Scott, where are they located?
In, in Chaska, they're located at the East Creek Family Center, which is where New Beginnings, also where our WIC location is. That's right by Chaska Boulevard and.
Behind Auburn.
Behind Auburn Manor.
Okay.
Behind Auburn Manor. Yep, yep. And then the one in Shakopee is at the CAP Agency Food Shelf Distribution Center.
Just lodging in my head, I know we talked about Community Resource Center and accessibility, so thank you.
So we're very excited about that, that business model, working with them. And that's an example of where Carver County partners with our community partners to leverage their niche, their resources, their passion, enthusiasm, in order to work together to address this need. And also, River Valley partners very strongly with the Veterans Association. We're hoping to launch a major diabetes campaign, work with both the state and the national veterans on launching that program and continuing that program to address diabetes, because as we all know, that's one of the biggest concerns in our country, and it's especially concerning with our veterans. This again is just another slide that illustrates the concern with mental health. One of the ways that we ask the question is, how many days have you experienced poor mental health days? And if you had zero, that was a good thing. Well, five years ago, we had more people who had zero than we had today, so basically we have a double negative, it makes it a positive. In this case, a positive is not good. That means you've had more, more poor mental health days. And this is just how substantiates what we all kind of know intuitively, working with our families.
That is a question that when you go to your doctor, years ago, they never asked you about that. And now, of course, it's every time you go.
And I think we're having a greater appreciation, and the research is supporting this, of the integration between both our mental health and our physical health. You know, it's, they both kind of influence each other. So the more we can address physical health helps mental health, more we can address mental health helps our physical health. And I'll be talking a little bit about that at the very end, when we talk about what's the umbrella that we're trying to harness in having all these services. Again, just another indication of the concern for mental health, this is just the number of mental health calls over service, a little up and down from year to year, but you can see that the trend is a little bit upward. This is the number of drug arrests, because obviously there's a lot of cold mobility with substance use and mental health. You saw how it go down in 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic, partly, but now it's starting to go back up. And in 2022, it's already higher than the 2019 pre-pandemic data. I don't have the full results yet for 2023. This again is suicide, deaths associated with suicide, both in Minnesota on the left, Carver County on the right. As you can see, it's definitely a trend upward, both at the state and national level. Because the numbers are relatively smaller for Carver County, you're going to have more year-to-year variation. It appears that we're still a little stable there, but obviously, that's such a traumatic event that affects so many people's lives, so obviously, we're striving to prevent any. And I think many of you know that Carver County hosts the 988 call system for nine counties. And so our staff are involved with responding to calls and concerns about both suicide and other crisis-related issues. This is the overall opioid deaths. As many of you know now, because of the opioid settlement, Carver County is a recipient of that, thanks in part to our county attorney and the work that his team and office have done. And we're using the funds associated with that settlement to address that issue. Minnesota, as you can see, from 2018 to 2021 had a forty-three percent increase. It's starting to taper off now. I don't have the 2022 statistic up here, but that amount is, was, I think it was about a little over a thousand. It was a three percent increase. So hopefully, it might be tapering off on that. The actual deaths that we have in Carver County obviously are considerably lower, but it's still a concern that we're, we are addressing. And I, actually, I added this slide. This might not be in your original packet, but I found this that specifically references the doses in Carver County. This is for emergency room. It's not all dose-related, because they might, if they did enter the emergency room, they wouldn't be registered here. But this is a really good marker of what we're seeing year to year with, excuse me, this is non-drug, non-drug overdoses. I'm sorry, my mistake. My version of the slide is a little bit different. This is the opioid overdose drugs from Minnesota, but it, it reflects the concern, even though the numbers of opioid overdose deaths in Carver County are significantly lower, obviously. The other area is non-fatal drug overdoses. And the reason why this is concerned important, because again, with the use of Narcan and naloxone and other harm reduction strategies, we can actually reduce the risk of death when we use those, but it doesn't, but it still means that people are using those substances. So that's why this is still a concern, because it, we, while we want to use efforts to prevent death, like you would CPR or anything else, we also want to address those factors that are contributing to them using those substances, if that makes sense. So that's why this kind of statistic is very important for us to monitor.
You mentioned Narcan, and then you mentioned the other drug that, that people are starting to use. Can you mention that again, so people are more...
Fentanyl is another opioid classification drug, and that's the one that I think has been primarily responsible for a lot of the deaths associated with opioid use. I think I could probably speak more to what led us to the opioid settlement, but in part was due to mis-marketing on the use of prescribed opiates for the management of pain. People got addicted to the opioids. Once that prescription ended, that addiction continued, and then they looked for other ways of getting that medication. Since then, the manufacturing of fentanyl from other places across the world have increased, and it's become easier and easier to get. It's also become more and more dangerous, because we don't always know what's in it. As a result of that, there's greater fatalities. That just sort of brief overview of that.
Yeah, but there was another drug I thought that was used now instead of Narcan to...
Well, naloxone is the, it's basically, that's the generic name for Narcan. Yeah, basically, from my understanding, it's pretty much the same medication, one's just a generic name versus...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I like the use of the word "mis-marketed," mis-marketing. Now, it's very polite of you. They, I think they marketed very accurately. They didn't miss any of it, and it was ending up getting a lot of people in trouble, so.
And that would be worth a whole nother conversation. I had a very delightful interview, actually, with one of our candidates for a position, who was sharing what he had been responsible for working with one of the major hospitals in Minnesota on re-looking at an algorithm on how much opiate should you prescribe post-secondary trauma. And by actually coming up with a more sophisticated way of determining that, not only did they lessen the pain, but they reduced the opioid, use of opioids forty percent and reduced pain, just by better targeting what worked and providing better education of what to expect. So clearly, and I know when I had my knee surgery, my orthopedic surgeon sent me with sixty doses of Oxycontin. I didn't need one, but it was the standard amount, and that was part of the concern back then, and that's what the physicians were told. All those practices have changed. And so as a result of that, it's, we're, we are making a significant difference on the early end of addiction, but now we're having to do with fentanyl and some of the other concerns.
Is fentanyl, does Narcan and naloxone, does that work for opioids and fentanyl? Is fentanyl an opioid?
I'm not an expert in pharmacology, but my understanding is yes, and then naloxone or Narcan work as an anti-opioid kind of antagonist. So that's what it reduces the impact. The concern, though, for many of the substance use is that is being laced with medications that are not, drugs, I should say, that are not responsive to Narcan. And so obviously, in those situations, it's becoming more, increasingly more difficult for rescue. And that's why we want to, obviously, we always want to do intermediate intervention and mitigation and recovery, but we also need to focus on upstream activities to reduce the risk of people engaging those practices in the first place. And that's why we want to address the whole continuum of care. So the third major area that we've discovered through our community health assessment, and I think this has been obvious for us for some time, is that our community is changing. We're the, one of the fastest-growing organizations, excuse me, one of the fastest-growing counties in Minnesota. We also are growing in, we're also becoming older, both in the over sixty-five as well as the over eighty-five area. There's also increasing proportion of our residents self-define themselves as being in the BIPOC community, Black Indigenous persons of color. And you, and then, and historically, that group has also been more associated with poor health outcomes for a variety of reasons. You add all of those things up together, obviously, we're going to have increased demands for healthcare and services, and those would be some of the things that we'll need to be mindful of as moving forward. Just some of the data that illustrate that, these are three graphs that support those populational changes. The upper left talks about our overall population, the anticipated growth. The second to the right just says which age groups are that growth happening in. The young one is children, the middle one is working age, the far right one is older adults. All categories are increasing. If you do the math, the actual increase, the highest number is probably going to be in the elderly, even though they're a lower percentage. But the actual percent change is also more in the elderly. It doesn't look like it from this slide, but when you start doing the math, you realize that, so we're going to have, we have a faster rate of growth in our elderly than any of the other population. What's positive, though, is that we have more children, and we have more working people. So we're going to have that group to support, hopefully, those of us who are now in my category as we move forward. The bottom slide just references the percentage of people who define themselves as people of color in relationship to the total population. So therefore, as you can see, by 2014, about eighteen percent of our population will be considered people of color. Back in 2020, it was about twelve. Now, when you look at the actual number of people that, that's almost four-hundred percent increase. So with that, we have to be mindful, and that's why it's important for us to be on the front end of learning how to engage with all of our residents, enlisting them to be part of our solution, so that we can all participate and continue making our county a healthy county. And that sort of then leads us to what do we go from here? I mean, as I mentioned earlier, the community health assessment is primarily designed as fodder for us to develop our community health improvement plan. We need to understand our community before we can engage our community and know how to solve our issues and support the health and wellbeing. And we have, again, we use a vetted process on doing that. I won't go through it in detail here. But basically, we learn what we do, what are our major priorities? As a result of those priorities, what are our current resources? Where are the gaps? How can we address those gaps to meet those priorities, and how do we enlist the community at large to be part of that solution? And from that, we develop some goals with measures, with some strategies and objectives. And then we outline what's our first operating plan, first year of operations, and then from that, we'll update it and then continue from there. Now, that's not Carver County Public Health Plan, that's the Communities Plan. And again, this was developed by our Public Health Advisory Group, twenty more or so people from across the county, different, representing different sectors of our community, all actively participating in this process, with the hope that they will own some of this, bring it back to their organizations. What can those organizations do to help be a part of meeting the needs here? And then from that, Carver County will develop our own unique specific in response to this. And that will be what I talk more about this fall. So what are some of those priorities for change that we can anticipate? I've alluded to some of them already, but one, we need to prepare for our changing population. We need to be aware, improve access, awareness and utilization of culturally responsive and affordable physical and mental health care. We need to strengthen our capacity to both prevent communicable disease as well as chronic illness and personal injury. We need to improve our capacity for future public health emergencies. And, and, and that's not just a pandemic-type thing, but that could be floods, it could be tornadoes, it could be active shooters. It could be a whole variety of things that we want to work in partnership with emergency management in order to be prepared for those situations. And then we want to expand new and existing opioid and substance use prevention, treatment, and mitigation that I was referring to earlier. So these are some of the areas that we anticipate will become our priorities once we engage in our community health improvement plan. So what does this lead us? Again, this is, sorry, I think my last slide that I like to talk about. We'd like to put all of this under the umbrella of communities of belonging. I think many of you have been active members of, of our organizations across the county on that. The reason for that actually comes from my, my professional experience and reading the literature that we're all hardwired for three things. Some of you may have heard me say this before, but we're hardwired for a need for safety, both physical safety and emotional safety. We're hardwired for a need of significance. In other words, we all matter. I always refer to Matt Urdeman, that was part of his slogan, right? And there's two sides of that coin. We need to have everybody feel that there's another person who has unconditional positive regard for them, and we need to have every person have an opportunity to make a difference for somebody else. So you're, and through that, you develop that sense of significance. Research supports that we're biologically wired for that need. And finally, we have a biological wired for the need of sense of belonging, not just striving to fit in. And what does that mean? That's what we need to discover for every community, because it's going to be different. But how is that community welcoming, engaging, and helping them be a part of both identifying the concerns and then investing in how they can continue to make their community a better place for all of them? And with that, we'll actually be more efficient, more effective at creating that health and giving more people opportunity to be fully engaged in their community. So we're really excited about that. The more and more I read about that, the more and more I realize that we're on the right track by addressing that issue. So with that, I surely will open it up for some questions and answers.
Questions and comments. The one slide that I really didn't like to see is the fact that our life expectancy is going the wrong direction. And the closer you get to that end of it, the more you realize how short and fleeting it is. Other questions, concerns? Commissioner Workman?
Well, live on the TV from Congress is our old friend, Dr. Fauci. I wouldn't say it's going very well for him. I guess I'm a little shocked at his answers about social distancing, probably the effectiveness of vaccines, and what's the other one? What are we supposed to make of that? I know this board and the county and you, we, we played it pretty conservatively and didn't jump on any bandwagons. But there's entire swathes of school-aged children who kind of missed a beat, or ten, because of this. What, what are we supposed, maybe it's a, I'm trying not to be that ambiguous, but you can fill in wherever you want, but... Don't people have a right to get a little bit angry? You know, we're standing around with masks six feet apart. People were getting in fights. And the efficacy of all of this was maybe just a big old fraud. So how do we, I don't know, what are we supposed to do? I mean, I'd like to look to the future, but... What do you think, Doc? Yeah, I hope you didn't expect less from me.
If I may, the safe answer would be no comment, right? I, I think, I think Commissioner Workman, if you don't mind, I remember you asking me at one point, and I hope you don't mind me sharing this story, but when we were in the thick of the pandemic, vaccines were coming out, there was a lot of debate on to what extent should we mandatorily force people to vaccine? And you asked me that question. And you said, what, you go, Richard, what's your opinion on, on, on requirements of, of thing? And I said, my answer was, Commissioner Workman, I care about you. And you hired me to be the voice of science, to let you know what the research says, and the research was clear. Mandated vaccines result in more vaccinations, more vaccinations result in preventing more COVID deaths. But I understand as human beings, we have a lot of other priority areas, and for some people, health isn't always their top one. And I respect that, because I care about the whole person, health is a part of that. And that was always the approach I took and my team took. We wanted to honor all the people in our community and realize that we all have different points of view. Yes, I will do my job to try to be persuasive, to understand the value of focusing on health, understand the value of finding the science, which isn't perfect. But then as we discover new stuff, we make course corrections and perform it. But we realized that ultimately, we, you, have to decide on what policies we advocate, and I've always honored that. Realizing that it wasn't always in alignment with what I would do, but I understood because I'm concerned about the whole person, I wanted to honor that. And you know, by taking that approach, I think in Carver County, we've actually been able to make more progress, because there's been more give and take, because we honor the whole person. And as a result of that, we build, more to build trust, and then people are more willing to be compliant with our recommendation. I had a wonderful example of that just happened last week, when a staff of mine came up and said, Richard, remember when you and I went out to this one community, 2018, when we had a measles outbreak? There was a portion of our community that was being targeted for, what they referred to then as anti-vaccinators. We had talked, we communicated, we were open, we weren't judgmental, we weren't shaming, we worked with them, we tried to help increase their willingness to do more vaccines. Some of them did, and as a result of that, in part, we didn't have one case of measles breakout, where our neighbors in Eden Prairie had a whole outbreak. That one family that we also talked to came to my staff just last week, and she said, I won't say their names, but because of your conversation, because you respected where I'm coming from, I want all my kids now vaccinated for measles, because we're now going through another outbreak of measles, and hopefully, they will be protected. because we're now going through another outbreak of measles, and hopefully, they will be protected. That's because we gave room to appreciate the whole person. I know that's my song and dance, and I don't mean to disserminalize on that, but I really appreciated you asking that question because that forced me to realize what is my role in the county. You hired me for the voice of science, but I'm just one role, and I honor what others needed room to the table, and you folks have the ones to make the decision on what policy.
Commissioner Urdeman.
Can you go back three or four slides that was talking about the population growth, aging population? That one? Yep, if I just focus on the upper right, I spent a considerable amount of time on slides that look like this. And my takeaway is our aging population is aging faster here than most other places. And our youth population is a population, even though they're growing in number, they're, they're shrinking in size. And so for us to be a vibrant population in twenty years, we have to invest in what's that next group of people that are coming in? School-aged children, et cetera. If that number persists in the next five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, keeping the take rate or the market share, whatever the number is for the school district, the number of people in our school districts will go down. So I obsess over this slide, not only because I have school-aged kids, but because our youth population is shrinking as a percentage of our population. And so your efforts in the fall, I would just plug this. I think that one of our best opportunities is to, to encourage community in summer. And I call it on-ramps to summer. Is there on-ramps for people that are new to our community, new to our county, new to our country? To have on-ramps into an area that's pretty heavily multi-generational people that have been here a long time. I'm a transplant, I've only been in Chaska for fifteen or sixteen years, and I've been in a lot of groups recently asking the question, hey, if you're a transplant, what is your, what does your friend group look like? What does your social, social infrastructure look like? And most of those folks would say it's made up of ninety percent of other like people that are transplants. Awful hard to break into this community. But we've now hit the tipping point that about half of our community is new within the last, they're the first generation to live in Carver County. Those things aren't lost on me, so I like the idea of an on-ramps to summer. So every second, third, and fourth grader has an opportunity to participate in at least three things in our community. I also like the thought of the Communities of Belonging adding a word, Communities of Belonging and Engagement, because we can belong and show up to meetings and be part of the group, but if we're not engaged in our community, it looks different. It's just a little tweak, so I'd offer that. I'll pile on to what Commissioner Workman said from the perspective of learning loss. And I think that's the point you were trying to get to, is the interruption through COVID. What does that mean for our kids? I think that our districts are actually covering that learning loss faster than other areas. So I think that's a, a way to, to spread kudos out. I think that the resilience of our kids and our families is something we can point to as a win, but there is learning loss. And I'll share a specific story. There was a number of passionate individuals on both sides of that equation, outside of the first two or three weeks that we knew about COVID. Those two or three weeks were unifying, we were on the same page. Didn't know your, it didn't matter your political stripes, it didn't matter your socioeconomics, it didn't matter who you lived next to. Like, we were scared and fearful, and we banded together, and then week four hit, and for some reason, we decided to be divided, right? I'm going to wear a mask, and you're not going to wear a mask, I don't like you anymore. Your politics are this, my politics are this. But one of the stories that I'll elevate is there was a parent that was super passionate and sensitive because his kid was competing in their senior year of basketball. Now, sports aren't end-all, be-all, but it's a metaphor. And it was like, I don't want to cheat my kid out of the opportunity to have a scholarship. I don't want to cheat my kid out of their senior year. I don't want to cheat my kid out of the graduation ceremony. Well, this individual made their way all through that, we had a lot of uncomfortable conversations, and, and his daughter is now playing Division One basketball. So I just elevate that up to say we were resilient in those periods, even though there was a lot of division. And then the last thing I'll say is, as you pointed it out, the two areas where we can shine our flashlight is mental health and housing. And if I go back to US World and News reports, which is kind of the foundation of some of this, in two thousand twenty-two, we were in the top five hundred healthiest communities, I think we were ranked number five, we've been there for ten, eleven, twelve years. And then there's factors that roll up underneath there, and the factors that we score the best on included economy. We need to continue to grow that economy so that we're strong there. Population health was eighty-six out of a hundred, we did great. You also have to look at the other bookend, the place that we scored the worst was in housing. And so I'm super encouraged at the conversation we're going to have next with their CDA is to say, what is that path? Because let's call a spade a spade. We are the most affluent county in the state, our aging population is aging faster than almost anywhere else, and we're pinching that missing middle. That's first-time school teacher making forty-five grand a year. We have to come to the table with solutions as to where do they live. We're not alone in this, we're not alone in this, but there's so, I was with a pastor yesterday, and he shared that most of his staff can't afford to live in Carver County. Can't afford to live here. We have to answer that question in a fruitful way, and it's probably naturally occurring housing. It's probably, we have to have the want to do so, or we're going to be in twenty years and that youth population is going to shrink, and we're going to have other big problems to face. So, thank you. If you have anything to comment about that shrinking youth population, and if there's a way that we can combat it, I'd be curious to hear what you have to say.
I made a note for future reference.
Yep. I was going to say, when you talk about, these are percentages. I mean, our, obviously, our population, our youth population is continuing to grow. But, what do I say, liar's figure and figures lie? You can make figures sometimes, take what you want, so. Other comments?
Just, just to be honest, that, that is not a percentage, that is the population growth. If you look at that as a percentage, our youth population is shrinking.
Yeah, a percentage, correct. Yeah, uh-huh, but this whole number of youth is still growing, there's no question about that. Commissioner Figg.
Mr. Chair, Richard, I want to thank you for the report. I mean, you and I have talked on, excuse me, various topics, and I think it does start here at the county and then also starts in the communities, the Communities of Belonging. We talked about that program, that program really never existed five years ago, and what Pat Stee has done and what's happening in the city of Cologne, and they're totally embracing that, and so are other cities. And I think that's important because it's the community base. If we can get the individuals engaged and be part of that belonging, I think it's just so important. And then you look on your slide for the priorities, it's prepare, adapt, and respond. And I think that's what we're doing, I think that's what you and your team are doing, and we continue to do that because we have to do it. And strategically, we just went through a lot of our strategic plans during that work session and to get feedback from Heather's group and your group and the county attorney and the sheriff and what they all want as we prepare. And we have to adapt, and then ultimately, we need to respond. So thank you for the report.
Well, thank you, and look forward to your next report later this fall. And always positive information, or not all the information is positive, but you always present it in a positive manner, so thank you very much. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn as the Carver County Board of Health and reconvene as the county board.
Go move, second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Urdeman, to adjourn, like I said, as the county board of health and reconvene as the county board. Any discussion on that motion? Most, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That moves us on to Mr. Hemsey's administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, a couple of quick items. Krista would love to help you with your calendaring, preferably in electronic form. I know some of you are reluctant, and that's okay, but, but it does not only help you, it helps her and all of us schedule meetings and sometimes avoid three of you getting in a meeting without public notice. So, so go directly to her, and she can help you out. And again, if you want to do it on paper, that's fine, too.
Does she need, just need our permission, or?
Yeah, you'd, you'll have to go in and, and give her, delegate authority to her, depending what you want her to do. But you can, you can start with the basics, just let her know when you're, when you're in a meeting, and she can plug it in. You can work that out with her. Like, like I, I delegate all permissions to her, so she can pretty much move things around, you know? But you don't have to go that far, and you can keep certain meetings private, if you want to keep your private schedule private. So there's all sorts of ways to do it, and she can help walk you through it. But, but again, I think it's, it's really, I think, I don't think everybody understands how beneficial it is for everybody to have that, it's an electronic form. And then a couple of related notes, we have budget hearings, there's a few openings yet. I had Mary Kay take care of that, so go to her if you want to jump on, jump into the, into a budget meeting or two. All of them actually, actually only have one or none, so they're all open for at least one more board member. And then finally, I'd remind you, if you're, think of heading out of state on county travel, remember you change the rules, so you need to put that on the agenda. So don't, don't forget that, if you're, I don't, Tommy, you go on the Washington Fly-In or other, that, that would have to be on the agenda. You can come to, to me on that, and I'll, I'll work with Krista, and, and Krista could also help you with, I'm loading her up here. She's like, wow, it's getting harder every, every minute here. But she'll also help you with travel arrangements, you know, flights and hotels. But just that, that change was something I had kind of forgot about until recently. Oh, wait a minute, let's make sure we catch that. That's it, Mr. Chair.
And with that, we're going to go into closed session as Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh-three allows the public entity to enter closed session to discuss labor and negotiation strategy. And saying that, is there a motion that we can enter into closed session?
Go move.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we will, we are into closed session now. And after that.